Sweet. It's nice when things work. Okay. So the live streaming is working and yeah, everything's going. Okay.
Okay, is it me? But I'm not seeing the caption.
I can see them. It says live transcript closed captioning has been enabled and I can see the words I'm speaking right now. It's at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, must be me.
I mean, I can show you. Do you see it? It's there at the bottom. No?
Hosts, are we ready? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Marshall. I am the City of Bend hearings officer assigned to this matter today. It is the 13th of January 2022. It is a little after 2:00 PM and this is a virtual public hearing being held via Zoom. And there is live transcription that's enabled if you have difficulty hearing some of the words that will be spoken today. This is for project number PLCP MA 20211033. This is a type three comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from medium density residential RM to high density residential RH with a concurrent rezone to match the new land use designation. The staff will go over the staff report, the staff recommendation, excuse me, that's been submitted to me as the hearings officer. I wanted to go through a few introductory matters before we get going on the hearing. This is a public hearing, as I stated, and it's on a type three application. Members of the public are invited to join and we will go over the Zoom participation aspects of that as well here in just a moment. I have no interest in the application or the applicant itself in this matter. And I believe that I can hear this matter in a fair and unbiased manner. I've had no contact by any person that wished to discuss anything related to this application prior to the hearing, other than scheduling this hearing date and reviewing the staff recommendation. If anyone has any objection to my hearing this matter today, please so state and I'll give everybody a moment. Okay, thank you. Being that this is a public hearing, I'm going to consider everything that's in the record as of the date of this hearing. And if the record is left open afterward, we will discuss that at the end of the hearing today. If you have anything in particular that you would like me to consider in making my decision, please make sure that you raise that today and/or request that the record be left open so that I can have everything before me in making my decision. I also wanted to note that while there is a contemplated subsequent land use application for this property, I am only hearing and deciding the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and corresponding zone change. So any details of future development are not before me at this time. All right, I think at this point, I would like to turn it over to Karen Swenson, staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, I kind of heard it in your comments that you addressed the raise it or waive it basis.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Karen. Right, anything that's not raised to me while the record is open will not be considered by me or any subsequent hearing body on appeal. So it is important that you bring everything to my attention today or if the record is left open, because if you don't raise it, it will be waived. So thank you, Karen. Thanks for having me clarify that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'm Karen Swenson, a senior planner in the Community Development Department at the City of Bend. And I will be sharing my screen to do a PowerPoint presentation, very brief. I jumped to the end. All right, so the public hearing today, as hearings officer Marshall indicated, this is just on the comprehensive plan map amendment, not any subsequent land use applications. And so this is the overall project area outlined in the dashed area. It is within the medical district overlay, which is the blue hatched area. And so it will be subject to additional criteria for subsequent land use applications. In terms of the surrounding developments, there are multifamily apartments to the south and southwest and commercial areas further to the south, duplex subdivision to the west, a senior living committee, community to the northwest and commercial and assisted living facilities to the north. I want to specifically point out the abutting property to the south, Fox Hollow Apartments, are multifamily apartments. And I did the calculation and it is approximately 22 dwelling units per acre. So it's right on that threshold between RM and RH. And I just want to make sure that I don't use too many acronyms. Medium density residential is RM and high density residential is RH. And looking forward, this applicant is intending to build 170 units on this 5.73 acre parcel, which would result in about 25.3 dwelling units per acre. So still kind of on the low end of that RH spectrum. And so this is how the new zoning map, comprehensive plan map and zoning map would look with that RH. And the purpose statement for the high density residential district indicates that the RH district is intended to provide land for primarily high density multi-unit residential in locations close to shopping and services, transportation and public open space. And so the commercial property is just one property to the south, that is the Forum Shopping Center. And there are bus lines along Northeast 27th Street. And then, as indicated by the name, this is in the medical district overlay. And so multiple medical facilities, as well as the hospital itself, just to the north. There are criteria for quasi judicial comprehensive plan map amendments. And this is being reviewed as quasi judicial, because it is only one specific property, not legislative, which would be sitting wide. So the criteria for this type of amendment is that it's applicable with the statewide planning goals. And there are, I think, 13? I can't remember the exact number of statewide planning goals. And so the staff recommendation goes through each of those and indicates whether it's applicable and how it is applicable. Specifically, goal 10 regarding housing, the Fair Housing Council has reviewed the staff recommendation and concurred with its findings. It also, the amendment must also be consistent with applicable comprehensive plan policies. And so we went through all of those comprehensive plan policies to determine which ones were applicable. And again, the staff recommendation details how this proposal is consistent with those policies. In specific, as I've mentioned in the graphic, its proximity to the hospital, medical services, bus line and commercial uses lends it to be designated RH as a suitable designation. It also must be presently served with adequate public facilities and it is surrounded by three fully constructed streets. And there are water and sewer mains in those streets as well. In addition, in anticipation of a future a future land use application, a traffic impact analysis and a water sewer availability memo analysis was submitted and the city has completed its memos on each of those to determine what mitigation would be required. And those are part of the file. The last two criteria is that there must be an evidence of change in the neighborhood or community or mistake or inconsistency in the comprehensive plan map regarding the property. And the 2016 housing needs analysis that was part of the last UGP update did recognize that they're changing demographic trends and specifically called out senior housing. And recently, the city council adopted new goals for the 2021 through 2023 biennium, reducing regulatory barriers for development of housing. And so while this isn't necessarily a barrier per se, it will facilitate a type of housing that is needed in community as the community's demographics change. And it would be noted that Fox Hollow today would be designated RH in terms of what density it developed. So that RH continuity to the south, to the commercial area would be established. And then finally, that it would be consistent with the transportation planning rule. And as I mentioned, that traffic impact analysis was submitted addressing the transportation planning rule and determined that the planned 170 unit senior housing actually would result in fewer trips than a traditional multifamily development in the existing RM zone. So that is just because of the nature of senior housing, they generally generates less trips. In terms of the public involvement, public notice was mailed to property owners and residents within 500 feet of the property. Public notice was posted on all three street frontages and we received one substantive public comment, which is uploaded to the file. And we had one inquiry as to which property this application pertained to. And I do see that we have additional people who attended to get today, which is great. But that's the extent of the written comments that we received. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Karen. At this point, we will hear from the applicant. And it looks like Mr. Shear is here.
Good afternoon, hearings officer Marshall. I have a presentation that I will try to get up here. Okay, hopefully you're seeing my screen now.
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a short presentation. Some of the slides are the same images that Karen had put up. So I will quickly skip through those. And I guess, sorry, I'll introduce myself first. So Joey Shear, I'm a planner with AKS Engineering and forestry here in Bend. And I'm a consultant for the applicant, the inland group. John Fisher and Reed Dickinson are, I believe, both on the call, the meeting here this afternoon. Along with other members of the team, John Page, who's an engineer here at AKS, and then Mike Swenson, who is a transportation engineer with the transport group. This team is really here to answer any questions, Ms. Marshall, that you have or that members of the public have. Otherwise, my intent here, based on kind of the volume of materials we submitted with the application, Karen's very detailed staff report and her good presentation. You know, I'm going to try to keep things very short and then just try to answer any sort of questions that you or members of the public might have. I would also start by thanking Karen and the other city staff that we've worked with on this application that have reviewed, not just the land use application, but as Karen mentioned, the sewer and water analysis and the transportation study that were submitted. We appreciate the staff's time and we appreciate their recommendation for approval of this application. So again, I think Karen covered the context of the site fairly well, the location here on the west side of 27th and northeast Bend. We submitted an exhibit showing the existing zoning and land use map. Karen also covered this. So I won't go through this in any sort of detail, but I'm certainly happy to come back to it if there are questions. This is a very high level concept of the senior housing that would be going in at this location. As Karen mentioned, you know, the reason for this the reason for this zone change and comprehensive plan map amendment is that the planned 170 units exceeds the maximum density of the RM zone. As Karen also mentioned, it comes in at the lower level of the RH zone. So we're not attempting to max out RH density here by any means. And when you look at traffic impacts, which, you know, when we held the neighborhood meeting, that is always a comment or a question that we get from neighbors for really any type of application, but especially a zone change and comprehensive plan map amendment. In this case, because of the proposed senior housing use, the trip generation at our higher density is actually less than a traditional multifamily project at maximum RM density. So we are requesting the upzone for the number of units. But as far as transportation is concerned, there will be lower impacts. And that's quantified in the traffic study that was submitted and the TAM that the city engineering reviewed and issued. So again, the proposed zone change, we're proposing to go to RH again in the medical district overlay zone. There is RH, just a half a block there to the north. And the criteria, so again, statewide planning goals, we covered those in the application also in Karen's staff report, comprehensive plan policies. And a lot of those comprehensive plan policies are about ensuring that there is adequate public facilities, adequate transportation, sewer water infrastructure for this site. And there's substantial evidence in the record that the answer is yes. The comprehensive plan policies also talk about the locations where it is preferred to have RH density. And those locations being close to transit facilities. Again, 27th Street is among the best served transit corridors across the entire city of Bend. We have three transit lines that run in 27th. And then again, another comprehensive plan policy or multiple comprehensive plan policies address proximity to commercial services, parks, other types of facilities, right? And so I have a couple of slides here that go into that in a little bit greater detail that we'll get to in just a minute. And again, just to reiterate, traffic analysis memo and the utility availability memo issued by City Engineering Division, again, are confirming that there are adequate public facilities, including sewer water and transportation for the planned rezone and compliant map amendment. And then, as Karen mentioned, evidence of change in the neighborhood or community. And again, I'll just reiterate, because it is important, the 2016 housing needs analysis provided a lot of analysis, looking at demographic changes and emphasizing that the baby boomer generation is going to be kind of, is projected to be the increase faster or more than any other kind of demographic generation here within Deschutes County and City of Bend. And so projecting, I think, a 37,000 person increase within this demographic through 2035. And so making sure that we have the housing that is specific to the needs of that population is important. And this application helps achieve that. So again, just to kind of touch on the proximity to kind of commercial retail, medical services around this site, you know, this is an aerial from Google Earth. You can see here, the Alexander is another senior housing, St. Charles and Summit Medical here to the northwest, medical offices, medical offices, banks, assisted living, retirement living, church. So that's just looking north. Looking south, as Karen mentioned, you have high density apartments, abutting the site. You have Safeway, additional retail, Costco apartments, you know, another grocery store, Whole Foods, retail and restaurants. So there is, you know, this is probably one of the highest density as far as retail, commercial services across a spectrum from like retail to medical, you know, anywhere in the city of Bend. And specifically for senior housing, this is a prime, prime location. So with that, that kind of ends the presentation. I'll thank staff again for their recommendation for approval. And Ms. Marshall, I want to make sure we provide you every opportunity to answer any questions before you close the hearing and begin your review and your decision.
Okay, thank you very much, Joey. Are there any other representatives on the applicant team that wish to present at this time?
I think they're probably going to just reserve if there's any sort of rebuttal or additional questions.
Great. Okay, all right. Well, at this time, I'd like to ask if any members of the public in attendance would like to testify in favor of the application. And then I'd like to ask if anyone would like to testify neutral, neither for nor against the application. Okay, now's the time that I will ask if anyone would like to testify in opposition to the application before me. I'm going to give it plenty of time.
Host, could you indicate how those individuals would share that they want to speak?
Yes, I can share that. And it looks like we do have one person that just raised their hand. Let me pull this up here, their directions. Okay. There we go. So here tells you how to raise your hand if you would like to speak, which we have somebody that has done that. So let me go ahead and make sure they're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Pardon me, real quickly, this is Stephanie Marshall, hearing officer. If you would please spell your name and include an address for the record, that would be helpful. Thank you. And go ahead.
My full name Kathleen, K-A-T-H-L-E-E-N, last name is Roche, R-O-C-H-E. I live at 63255 Stonewood Drive, Bend, Oregon 97701. I am the chair of the Boyd Acres Neighborhood Association and also acting as land use rep at the moment. This is not in my neighborhood. This is in a different neighborhood. I think it's Mountain View. But I'm not sure. Maybe somebody could answer that for me. But I'm also a rep from Boyd Acres on the Neighborhood Leadership Association. And the citywide land use group that goes with the NLA. And I'd just like to say, although this is my first exposure to this, this seems like a very appropriate place to have slightly higher density without pushing it to the max. I've heard a lot about other places in town where we're looking at raising density. And it seems like this would go along with the recent executive order from the governor and some of the other regulations that are coming online from Department of Land Conservation. And that's all I have to say, except I would like somebody to answer the question about which neighborhood association is this in? And what did that? I don't know if there's anybody who knows. What did the neighborhood association provide for information?
Yes, it is within the Mountain View Neighborhood Association. And there was no response from the neighborhood association specifically on this application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roche. And I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone else present today wish to provide any testimony? In favor or against? Yeah.
Couple of hands raised. The first one that came up was Mike Maxwell.
Okay.
Ready to go, Mike, when you are. You should be unmuted, Mike, if you're ready to talk.
Yep, your hand is up and the mic is unmuted. So you should be able to talk if you have your microphone ready to go on your end. Maybe you need to check the settings for Zoom to make sure that you have your computer's microphone enabled.
We could go to Carol Elwood while Mike Maxwell is figuring it out.
Okay, that sounds good. So let me just. Carol, ready to go? Okay.
Yeah, this is Carol Elwood. Can you hear?
We can hear you. Yes.
Yeah, Carol Elwood, address is 1917 Northeast Higher Ground Avenue, Bend, Oregon. And I am the land use chair for Mountain View Neighborhood. So I'm just confirming that you're correct. We are the neighborhood that this project lies within and we did not plan to make any position either for or against. We did have a nice presentation from Inland Construction coming to our board meeting to describe the project. And nobody has stated any opposition.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Elwood. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? All right, I appreciate your attendance and your comments. Were we able to get Mr. Maxwell able to testify at this time?
Mike Maxwell could also call in and use the star nine key if that's easier. Let's do that. Does he have that phone number?
It would be on the calendar and we can share that screen.
Please do. Please do. So it would be using the star nine key to raise your hand on the phone. And it's raised, so asking the caller to unmute. Okay, Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Maxwell.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, I'm, yeah, Mike Maxwell. I represent the the 23 acres of property across the street, Snowberry Village, the 55 and Older Park. And the property manager there, and I just wanted to say, yeah, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. I was just only curious on the fact that I know they've done a study on the impact over here in this neighborhood, the traffic light at Mary Rose. Just just trying to find out just exactly what study or how that's going to impact the another 150 cars that are going to be basically on this corner? If there's going to be any traffic light changes or anything like that, or is that ever, are we too, is that too far out for this conversation?
I had the traffic engineer for the applicant can answer that afterwards.
Okay.
This this is John Fisher from the Inland Group, the applicant. We do have our traffic engineer, Mike Swenson, who is an attendee who could reply to that.
Go ahead, Michael. Mike?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mike Maxwell, are you done with your comments? Was that your only question? Do you have further comments?
No, that was just my only question, just the impact for this particular intersection of Mary Rose and 27th.
Okay, Mike Swenson, would you like to respond?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, for the record, my name is Mike Swenson. I'm a principal with the Transpo Group. We're the firm that authored the transportation study that's been discussed. We worked closely with city staff to establish the scope of that study. And as been noted by a couple of folks previously, part of that study looked at really from a comprehensive planning perspective on the impact of of the proposed affinity project, which has a senior housing component as compared to, you know, market rate, medium density. And that was was noted, you know, the the senior housing project does generate less trips. In regards to kind of the the area of focus, the study really looked at, based on talking to staff, given the overall trip generation for the project, and this gets into a project level. But it's it's anticipated to generate about 44 trips in the PM peak hour. So that's the one hour period between four and six, and that's the peak hour of the of the day for the project, like I said, 44 trips. So we look primarily at the site driveways to make sure that those would function safely and operationally appropriate. We did not look at the traffic signals that were in and around the site, again, based on the trip gen. The city did not identify those as a as a requirement of the study. And, you know, we we did present trip distribution patterns, and so, you know, when you look at the 44 trips and you start to distribute that traffic north and south of the site, that the impacts of the project and the number of trips going through these intersections, it's pretty small, pretty quick, so. That that covers if that answers the question completely, but I'm happy to expand where necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. I had a quick question, if Mr. Maxwell is still on the line, and that's really just for record keeping. Mike Maxwell, if you could please provide your mailing address, that would be helpful if you're still on the line.
I think he's still on the line.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. I just muted.
Okay, there. Yes, I'm still here.
Yeah, Mr. Maxwell, if you could please include your mailing address for notice of the decision, that would be helpful.
Sure, the address is Snowberry Village, 1188 Northeast 27th, number 61.
Okay. In Bend, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, oh, one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. At this time, I'll I'll ask if there are any other persons which wish to provide testimony on this application today. And I will wait to hear if there are any members raising their hands. John Fisher, applicant?
Yeah, hello, hearing examiner Marshall, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am, Mr. Fisher. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Just wanted to introduce ourselves as the Inland Group and applicant on this project and the proposed affinity senior living community that we're hoping to develop here. Just wanted to state in terms of of who we are and what we do, we are a long term owner of of these types of communities that we build. We've built 26 to date in the Western United States. Not only are we the owner, but we're the general contractor and property manager, so we're highly invested from beginning to end in the success of our communities and certainly look for neighborhoods where we are a good match and fit as we want to be an asset to the neighborhoods in which we relocate our senior living communities. So we've been hopefully very transparent and reaching out to the Mountain View Neighborhood and Carol Elwood's group early on with the community, the proposed community. And really just want to thank Karen and the city of Bend, as well as our consultant, Joey, and just getting this to to this point today. So just want to make a quick introduction, and and again, thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. It's good to hear from you. Are there any other participants that wish to provide testimony today? I do not see any other hands. Well, I guess at this point, typically I turn it back to the applicant to rebut any any testimony or evidence provided by members of the public. Just heard from Mr. Fisher, and I it doesn't really appear to me that there's anything to rebut, but, you know, I'd like to to kick it back to the applicant to see if there are any other closing remarks that the applicant wishes to make on this application.
No, I just I thank everybody for their time, and I guess one one point I would add is that regarding neighborhood outreach, as as Carol mentioned, John Fisher did did make a presentation to the the Neighborhood Association at the regular meeting. We also scheduled a second formal neighborhood meeting to meet the requirements in the city's development code for for public meetings. So we actually we had had two meetings, one of which did technically meet those requirements. So again, inland inland has been doing more than than I think what is typical as far as neighborhood outreach. And then other than that, I I guess maybe just to clarify for the members of the public that are on the call, I think there is reference to a notice of decision. My understanding is that the the hearings officer will be making a recommendation to to city council. So just to to clarify that if if needed.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate that as well. That's that's the process, and and I I wasn't very clear on that. My decision will will include findings and conclusions with a recommendation to the city council to to either approve or or deny the application based on the evidence in the record and based on my findings and conclusions. So notice of of that recommendation will be provided to those people that are have have provided their information and address and have participated. Okay.
Here, Examiner Marshall, just a quick question. Is it typical to hold the public comment open? Or will you be closing it today at the end of the meeting?
That's a that's another great question. Usually I'll get some some feedback as to like, well, we, you know, people, members of the public will say, you know, I'd like to submit more information on traffic, say, or impact to this this area nearby or intersections or or what have you, and I've not heard that today. But, you know, certainly if if the applicant wishes to have the record left open for a period of time, I'm I'm happy to grant that, you know, and and usually how that will work is it'll be a 777, which means the first seven days is is pure open record, anything new can be submitted. And then after that, the next seven days is to rebut new evidence submitted. So no additional new evidence, but rebuttal evidence, and then the final seven days is for closing argument, and that's for the applicant only. So if there is a request for the record to be left open, I'm I'm happy to entertain that and and to grant that, if you will.
We we haven't heard any new evidence presented here this this afternoon, so we would prefer to move forward quickly in recognizing that the public will have other opportunities to testify in front of the city council. So our our hope would be to to close the record and move forward with the recommendation.
Okay. Staff sees no need to keep it open.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's input. So yes, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public record on the application. And I will take the evidence submitted in the record and and testimony today into consideration, and we'll prepare findings and conclusions with a recommendation to the council. Thank you, everyone, for attending today. I appreciate your time, and we'll go ahead and close the hearing now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I'm going to go ahead and leave the meeting.
And I am too. Thank you, Sheila.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.